I call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, November twenty seven, two thousand and twenty-three, and the time is six P M. This meeting is being livestreamed and recorded. The recording of this meeting will be posted on the district website as soon as possible. Welcome, members of the community here tonight, to observe the important work being done on behalf of all school district stakeholders.
Dr. Homan, we have some items in the table file. Will you update us?
Yes, we had several items in the table file this evening. We did have the executive audit summary that was in the table file. We also had several items in the consent agenda, including some appointments, increase, decrease, change in assignment, some leaves of absences, and a couple of resignations. And then I also want to point out that we have a grant application approval for a successful grant for a hundred thousand dollars from the Cerise Walburn Foundation for a partnership to strengthen two-one instruction. So we're very pleased with that grant, and it's in the table file for your approval this evening.
That's wonderful. Thank you. If there are no objections, we will add these items to the agenda as we move forward. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Move by Jeff Second. Final. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Sorry, excuse me. Because we have Amy on video, then Anita will facilitate all of our votes. Anita, we facilitate a roll call vote.
Burwitz?
Aye.
Gonzalez George?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Quinell?
Aye.
Stratmon?
Hey, thank you. Do we have anybody signed up for public comment? Okay, we will move past item three, and item four is announcements and recognitions. Dr. Homan, do you have anything to share?
We do not have any announcements or recognitions this evening.
Okay, then we will move along. Item five is our items for discussion and reports, and first up is our fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three audit results and presentation. Craig Oppenhaven Hagan with Clifton Larson Allen L L P will present the results of the two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year audit. A draft of the audit report is available upon request, and a summary is in the packet. Packet, yes.
Welcome.
All right. Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here. I'll just walk through the audit results at a kind of a high level here, but a very good result, results for you again here this evening. So clean opinion on the financial statements. No findings whatsoever here, so compliance is clean for Minnesota, legal compliance, no findings on internal controls, which is very noteworthy. Mainly because many, many of our audits, we have to at least issue a finding on preparation of the financial statements. We don't have that here, so that is a very good result. That does not happen too often, so I would say probably less than ten percent of our audits. So very good results there. Certainly had enough federal expenditures this year, again, that you needed the federal compliance audit. This year, just because of how we have to rotate around testing of specific programs or certain programs, we were able to just audit the Esser Gear program this year, and no findings there. We did have one new accounting standard that was reflected in the financial statements for subscription-based information technology arrangements. Otherwise, probably more easily understood as software. So anytime you have a multiple-year agreement for software subscriptions, we have to do some extra accounting for those in the financial statements. So that was reflected here. Some changes coming in each of the next two years, so nothing like super major, but the one in two thousand and twenty-five probably will require a little extra look at accumulated sickly balances and if we need to do some extra accounting in the financial statements for those. So the changes keep coming. But now we'll kind of shift gears here, and what we're looking at is just kind of a higher, high-level summary of the general fund. So in total, sixty-two point eight million dollars in revenue, sixty-four point seven million dollars in expenditures. And the the largest portion of that, so expenditures exceeded revenues. That was reflective of how you budgeted for the year. One point eight million of that was a reduction in kind of what we call the unrestricted, so basically assigned, unassigned. So it's the kind of the flexible spending that you have control over. So you had a decrease in fund balance there of one point eight million dollars in total. You ended that category at eleven point five million dollars. Classroom restrictions saw about a five hundred thousand dollar increase. Most of that in the area of area learning center and targeted services, and then some capital spending in both your operating capital and long-term facilities. So especially the L T F M was kind of mirrors your ten-year capital improvement plan. So that was kind of, you know, you planned for that to occur, and that did. We'll kind of then show you some of these, what some of this looks like in kind of a pie chart, which is a little bit easier to, a little easier to digest. So general fund revenues by source, again, the sixty-one million coming in. Sixty-six percent of that is controlled kind of by the state of Minnesota's Department of Education. So that kind of comes with some strings attached. Property taxes make up about twenty-three percent, which is, I mean, honestly, that's pretty awesome. So the community is really standing behind Northfield Public Schools and in supporting you and your programs here. So that's a really great to see. The other thing that was a positive here was earnings on investments. So with the interest rate environment where it is and investment values kind of coming back, you actually made had a positive return on your investments this year. So that reflects almost one percent of revenues coming in, and then the federal kind of alluded to that on the slide where we were talking about the Esser Gear programs and having to test those. Large expenditures on Esser Gear, kind of think of it as the COVID aid coming through in twenty-three, so that federal made up about seven percent of your total revenues this year. So you can kind of contrast that with the year prior. So about fifty-nine point eight million of revenues in the year prior, you can kind of see the difference in the federal percentage. Five point eight a year ago, seven percent in the current year, and a negative return on investments a year ago and a positive this year. So almost a full percentage point change there. Looking at expenditures, so expenditures for the current two thousand and twenty-three year, sixty-four point seven million. And here kind of start with the circle on the left. So this is everything, all sixty-four point seven million kind of divided up, and seventy-eight percent went to the classroom. Only three and a half percent went to administration. Seven percent went to capital outlay. So you had some larger expenditures this year, again, kind of the L T F M projects coming through. So there's a high school office remodel, security systems, boiler repair. Also, a large new iPad lease is part of that seven point one percent. So kind of what that does is it squeezes the instructional portion of the pie chart as a percentage. So capital as a percentage went up. It squeezed the instructional percentage to seventy-eight percent, even though in terms of real dollars, you spent as much or more than the year prior. But that kind of shows you then on the right circle how that seventy-eight percent is broken down. So almost half of it goes to regular classroom instruction. About twenty percent to special ed, special education, and then another twelve percent or fifteen percent to instructional support and pupil support. So think of it as seventy-eight cents on the dollar went to classroom instruction or supporting students. Again, that if we compare, the next slide will show the year prior. And if your prior was at an eighty percent mix for instruction, but really that's just a result of there was much less capital expenditure in the year prior. So two point one percent compared to seven. So we kind of look at the enrollment trends. It was trending downward. That's not that's not unusual. So kind of think of it from a revenue standpoint. Say, over the five-year, five years here that we have depicted about say, two hundred and fifty students, right? Decline or decrease in enrollment. Quick math, figure you get ten thousand dollars of aid and levy per student. That's about two and a half million dollars off the top line revenues. And I know that's something that you've been looking at and challenged with when you're setting your budgets on a year-to-year basis. So that's just something certainly to keep an eye on. It kind of also translates into that decrease in the unrestricted portion of your general fund, fund balance that we were talked about earlier on in the presentation here. Food service, fund balance, we'll hit a few other fund balances. So when we talk about fund balance, I mean, it's basically financial resources left over at the end of a school year that carry forward for future use. And food service, we saw a jump in fund balance in two thousand and twenty-two. That was because of the Seamless Summer Option program for food service that was federally funded. So all the meals for the students and families were free in the two thousand and twenty-two year, had higher reimbursement rates, which increased fund balance. And now going forward, what basically the Department of Education wanted you to do is come up with a plan of how you're going to use it. They're not going to, like, they're not going to take it back, but they want you to use it. And so that's what happened here in two thousand and twenty-three. That's why the fund balance went down. So you bought some items for the kitchen, so refrigerators, freezers, and a combi oven. So that was new in the capital area within food service, and that's, you know, that's kind of the the frustrating part of food service fund balances. That's the only place it can be used is in food service. Basically, you have to use it in the kitchen. So so capital kind of investing in any equipment like that, that's a, that's a good place to use it. What you cannot do is transfer it to any other fund. So has to stay here and be used in food service. Likewise, community service, much the same. So you could not take a community service or community education fund balance and transfer it to anything outside of community education funds. Two thousand and twenty-two, he had a childcare stabilization grant, which helped provide some funding for your community service program and increased fund balance. And then in two thousand and twenty-three, basically, you broke even. So fund balance, that fund balance from prior year carried over. And then just a couple other looks at some expenses for you. So this is kind of looking at expenses per student. So think of the enrollment slide that we had up a couple slides ago with your student count. What we're doing is dividing that into some expenses right off of your financial statements. So the first one, district and school administration and support. That is about three point five million dollars in total, divided by the student count is about a thousand forty-three dollars per student for two thousand and twenty-three. You can see the five-year trend in the dark shaded bars, and then some comparables on the right. So the blue shaded bar is districts with between two thousand and four thousand students enrolled. So you can see that basically you're spending less on a per-student basis there. That also ties in with the pie charts we were looking at. So about three and a half percent spent on administration for expenses. And then the yellow shaded bars, it's just all districts in the state. So those are on a one-year lag. So those are, the comparables are twenty-two. Your actual cost in this category decreased about fifty, fifty dollars per student from two thousand and twenty-two. Because in the year prior, in twenty-two, you had some severance severance pay paid out as a result of some retirements. And kind of the flip side of that, this one is looking at regular instruction cost per student. So this is the largest line item in your budget, twenty-nine point six million dollars for two thousand and twenty-three. Was about where almost fifty percent of your general fund expenditures go here. This is classroom and regular classroom instruction. So you can see comparatively, you're putting more money into the classroom relative to other districts of the same size. And then something else that's in here in two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-three especially, there's some large components of COVID aid spent in this category. So I think it was about one point seven million of COVID aid spent here in two thousand and twenty-three and about one point one million in two thousand and twenty-two. So that's kind of reflected here as well. And the benchmarks or the comparisons, you know, probably not as comparable as maybe other years before COVID, for the simple fact that there was quite a bit of flexibility given to districts on where they would spend or how they would use that COVID money. So, you know, they could be using that anywhere up and down the income statement. So not necessarily all or in regular instruction, it could have been spread out to all the other categories as well. But it gives you some idea anyway where kind of the, where you're putting your money. So I think that is the last slide that I had. So I will turn the meeting back to you. If there's questions, certainly, can I entertain some questions?
Thank you so much, Craig. Appreciate you and glowing report for Val on financial stewardship for our district. Any questions from the board members, questions or comments?
Thank you, and thanks, Craig. Appreciate that detailed report. I would echo that. Congratulations to Val and her staff. It's no small thing, I think, to have a financial report with that. Well, no findings, right?
Right.
Craig, I was just curious from your experience, when you look at similar districts, similar sized budgets, how often do you see a report like this with no findings?
Not very often to have none. You know, it just the environment that you're in is, you know, rife with requirements and rules and stipulations and certain procedures that you have to follow. So, yeah, I would say probably, you know, probably less than ten percent to come out with no findings at all. Very good results.
Yeah, thank you. And a few other things that stand out, I think, right? You talked about just COVID funding and the complexity that comes with the fact that there's, we met all those requirements, or just another thing, feather in our cap and a good representation of just how the district responsibly manages the public resources that we do get, both from the state and from local property tax payers, as you pointed out. Yeah, I think the final point I would make too is just that it's good to see that, you know, a lot of the budget comparatively is spent in the classroom, you know, that our administrative costs are relatively lower compared to similar-sized districts. So all good things. Appreciate it. You have the report. Absolutely.
Okay, Noel, you had a comment question?
Yes. Regarding general fund expenditures for administration, is there a state goal for administration percentage of expenditures?
I would probably say probably not a goal, but, you know, what I'm used to seeing is, you know, probably eight percent to maybe up to twelve percent. So you're running pretty, pretty lean.
Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good report.
Thank you. Jenny, do you have a question?
Yeah, thanks for the report. Good job, Val and your financial team. Question I had is, I guess, do the, as far as from the general fund and property taxes, if we're twenty-five percent, is that very much at all from district to district?
It varies quite a bit from your district to about every other district that we work with. Usually in the teens for the high ends for, for property taxes. So your voters are very supportive there.
Amy, do you have a question?
Well, thank you, Craig, for the excellent news for us, and I just wanted to also thank Val and her team for yet another clean audit. You guys are amazing. You rock. Thank you.
I'm just one. I appreciate the recognition of the great work that the district has done on the financial management. But this isn't just one clean audit in a row, and I think it's important for the community to know. This is the third consecutive audit with zero findings with arguably the three most complicated years in the history of Minnesota school finance. Never have we had the influx of funds like we had from COVID from the federal government with such specificity around what was in and what was out to be able to be used. And as we see narrative from across the country, numerous districts that have been cited for not using those dollars in an appropriate way. So I think it just goes to the oversight and the management. So I appreciate, I just want to make sure people know, this isn't just a one-year thing, right? This is a multi-year, completely clean audit during the most complicated coding time in terms of how we code things in for sure, my thirty years in public education. So I think that Val and the team and then everyone, it is Val does a great job, and our finance office does a great job of training our building-level financial managers so that they're coding things right on the first time. So it is an entire system that Val has developed to make sure that we are paying close attention and doing those things. But it's just not, hey, we did well this year. This is three in a row. And as I've said, this is the equivalent of going undefeated in the NFL season and winning the Super Bowl three years in a row. So I think it should give the public a lot of confidence in that their taxpayer, their tax dollars are being put to good use.
Very nice. If there are no other questions or comments, very good. Thank you so much, Craig.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, we are on to item B, which is our policy committee recommendation. Dr. Homan will present the policy committee's recommendation to adopt policy two oh seven. This will be an item for individual action at our next board meeting. Dr. Homan? Yep, sure.
I'm plugging in here, Tim, so if you can bring it up on the screen, that'd be great. So this is a new policy. It, we did start with the Minnesota School Boards Association model policy. It is around public hearings, and it's something that we had not adopted before. And again, we don't have a ton of public hearings, but as we have thought about how we bring our stakeholders to the table, outlining the process in which they would do so and how we govern those meetings we felt was important to have before you need it. And so, you know, we've done some really successful public meetings. They really have run counter to the narrative across the country, right? They've been super productive. They've been respectful, and we thought, what have we learned from those meetings and how can we put it into policy so that that governs everything moving forward? So we started with the MSBA model policy and then did a few modifications. The one piece that I'll share is that what you will see is that we have mirrored the people who are allowed to participate in a public hearing to the same kind of language that we use for public comment. So we are asking, or we are requiring that people who want to address the board in a public hearing, should the board allow it, which they typically would if you're going to have a public hearing. I'm just talking about that their residents of the district, their owners of businesses or property physically located in the district, their parents are guardians, students or an employee of the district. So we are trying to make the guidelines, the rules, if you will, for public hearings mirror that of what we have for public comment so that the community can anticipate what those expectations are. There's really not any rocket science in this particular policy. This is how we have run things before. But we just know it's best to try to be able to get ahead of these kinds of things so that we capture what has been successful. And then it also provides guidance for future boards when they have public hearings. We do have two public hearings a year for sure. One is the world's best workforce that you heard at the last meeting, and another one we'll have in coming up at the next meeting, which is the annual truth and taxation hearing. And so again, we're just trying to make sure that the process and procedures for those meetings are universally understood ahead of time. So I'd be happy to take any questions that people had about the policy.
Very good. Any questions, board members?
And this is first reading, no approval tonight.
Okay, Jeff?
Is there any state statute as far as guidelines for that type of policy?
Yeah, that's a good question. So the, the policy is to my knowledge, there is no statutory requirement. And when I look at the, the reason I scroll down, Jeff, is I was looking at these cross-references. So this is around establishing. I don't see anything in those adjacent references that would indicate there's a state requirement. But we'll, we'll double-check between now and the time we ask you to approve it. This is not a required policy. This has been an MSBA pop model policy for some time that we had not yet adopted. But again, just making sure that people know what the expectations are before we have a public hearing, we think is a good thing. So I will double-check any of the statutory reference. I don't see them right here, right off the bat, but we'll make sure we have it for the next meeting.
Anyone else comment or question? Okay, very good. Thank you, Dr. Homan. And item C is Superintendent Focus Areas Quarterly Report. Superintendent Homan will present a quarterly progress report on his twenty-three, twenty-four focus area.
Yeah, so part of the focus areas that you adopted this fall showed that I would provide some updates around those areas. What we use is quarterly, and we're going to need to think about that because, of course, we didn't adopt these goals until late August, early September. So I looked at, I'm going to give you a report at the end of the first academic quarter, at the end, around the end of the second academic quarter. And of course, it's got to be a little bit after those quarters complete. So that term quarterly, we'll have to think about, is that the right one moving forward? But nevertheless, I'll give a very brief overview. So there were four areas that you had identified or approved as focus areas for me this year, in addition to all of the normal day-to-day leadership work that we do. The first area was around implementing the REED Act. What we know is that the REED Act is one of the most significant pieces of legislation in recent memory, and we are gearing up to be able to implement that. Northfield was fortunate to be ahead of the game a bit, that we had already been doing a training-based and evidence-based reading practices. So we were really ahead of the game in a lot of areas when it comes to the REED Act. But what you'll see in the report is we did complete the screening that was required. We've been doing screening for some time. Over fourteen hundred students participated in that screening, and again, it was part of our assessment plan before this went into law. We are going to have to adopt the new screening tool for next year. We had been using a product that did not make the list for M D. It was a product that a lot of folks used, but we aren't going to be able to use that moving forward. So we'll be adopting a new screening tool for next fall. We're already looking as to which one we'll select there. We also, the REED Act requires us to send the letters to families in grades of students in grades K through five who are not meeting the grade level benchmark, and we chose to send that if they missed the benchmark on two consecutive screenings. It is not uncommon when we do this first benchmark at the beginning of a school year, that that summer regression can have an impact. So what we want to do is we don't want to concern parents too early. So if we had two consecutive screenings, it could be fall and spring. It could be spring and fall, because we'll do this twice a year. But we did send letters to families as required by the REED Act and gave them some suggestions about how they could partner with us in helping improve their students' reading ability. We continue to work on training. Right now, around fifty-six staff members have started or completed that hundred and forty-four-hour letters course as we've talked about, and we are pleased that letters is one of the approved training courses that was adopted in the legislation. And we are currently working on how to solve the problem of getting everyone else who is required to be trained, to be trained. And we're looking at a number of different potential ways to do this. There could be some substantial additional cost with this as well. But again, we're early in the problem-solving stage. There were fortunate to have so many staff members already trained, because so many other districts are not in that case at this point. And then there's a number of things that the Department of Education has to do with the REED Act that we just have to hurry up and wait for. So for example, they're going to identify curricula. We understand in January that would be state-approved. And then when a district moves to a new curriculum, they'd have to use one of those approved choices. We obviously can't, we have a curriculum that we We obviously can't, we have a curriculum that we um adopted in twenty seventeen that we believe meets the spirit of what the legislation intends, but we're gonna have to wait and see um what those items are. And then there's a number of other items that we're just gonna have to wait for the department uh to complete their work. The second focus area is really on state legislation. And you know my um affection for the the state legislature. I mean that in all sincerity, I really appreciate the work that the twenty twenty-three legislature did. You've seen my six or eight-page nine-point font spreadsheet of all the things we have to accomplish over the next several years. So I will, I will give you all a gift and not go through every single one of these. I will just say that in the packet in the report I gave you a list of, I think there's a few of them there uh that we have already started to either implemented or started to work on implementing. It's not an exhaustive list, but for the purposes of demonstration of the work that we've done on this focus area, I felt we gave you enough items to show you the work that's been being done. And you can certainly ask any questions about any of those when I'm completed here. Um, the third area uh is around making sure that we're seeking feedback um from traditionally marginalized demographics uh segments of our community um and seeking feedback specifically from Black, Hispanic and Indigenous parents and students about their school experience and the way that the district can improve it. We've already had two of our Indigenous Parent Advisory Committee meetings. Our first Hispanic Parent Advisory Committee was canceled due to illness and our first um Black Parent Advisory Committee is scheduled in December. Um, in addition, there is a new community group that's actually not just Northfield, but surrounding areas um that is intended to really support uh parents of Black students. And so I have attended one of those uh parent group meetings and just got to know them and to be able to create some uh positive relationships there um as well. Uh, the final uh area that you approved was developing a structure, supplying the necessary information and recommending appropriate timelines for the board to decide what bond referendum questions um if any should be uh presented to the voters in November of twenty twenty-four around substantial facility improvements at Northfield High School. I know that you're all well aware of this, right? You've seen the timeline several uh at several meetings. We have held our first uh work session. We've held our first tour. This is an item for um on the agenda just a little bit later. Um, and then we uh have approved the community survey that's set to be conducted in January. So again, uh, this is just a report to you about where we are at on the focus areas, and I'd be happy to take any questions or comments or feedback about it at this time.
Thank you so much. Board members, any comments or questions? I'm gonna start with Amy. Do you have any? And I didn't call on you for the um policy um recommendation, Amy. If you have any comments on that, you can also chime in.
No comments on the on the policy, but I do have a question for Dr. Hillman about um how many teachers do we have that still um should be trained in letters?
So that's a complicated question because it is not just over the next year. So what we're prioritizing uh in the coming year are our, the teachers of our youngest students. So our current estimate is that there are eighteen kindergarten through third grade teachers that are yet to be trained. Those teachers are required to be completed with their training. My understanding is by uh next summer. One, twenty twenty-five is that first run. And then each year, then it becomes four, there's another grade level band all the way up through um high school teachers who are responsible for teaching and reading. So there are quite a few people yet to be trained, but in that first band, there's my understanding around eighteen, just a little bit less than twenty.
And how many teachers have been trained so far?
We have fifty-six that are either completed or in process.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy. Uh, any other questions or comments, board members? Ben?
Thank you. And Dr. Hillman, when you look at the goals, you know, your third goal for implementing items coming out of the last legislative session, are there any that you are thinking are gonna take more of your time and attention, maybe more than you thought a few months ago when we first set that as a goal?
Just checking my watch. Um, I think the one, and to be clear, um remember that I'm not personally responsible for each one of these, but uh, you know, our school, I'm ultimately responsible, but members of our team um are also responsible for these. So the one that I would say I I think is creating um the most work, not just here, uh but across the state, is the, at this moment in time, is the um implementation of the employee safe and sick time that will go into effect in January. There's a tremendous amount of work that is happening. Uh, it expands uh the opportunity for paid uh sick leave time to, we have a great sick leave a- approach, right? All, many of our contracts, all of our contracts have um sick leave part as part of it. This expands it to to folks who may not have qualified before. For, so for example, um coaching staffs, coaching staff folks who are typically a stipended position now technically would be eligible. And so while they very rarely would use it, we're required to make sure that we have the balance for those staff members, um even if they work in a very part-time role. So that's the kind of complication uh that we're working through. That would be one example. Right? A few months ago, if you would ask me in July, I would have said the uh new unemployment insurance requirements, just because it was again so new and really getting those things rolling so quickly. So those are a few of the examples. And of course, the Reed Act is something that is um, and it just literally every week. Um, right now, we're working on what is the sequence of our social studies courses at the high school to be able to implement the required civics course um that will be required in eleven to twelve, all things that are doable. They just all take time um and and capacity and making sure that we're getting things right. So it just, it seems like every week we're getting to tackle another issue, but the employee sick and safe time right now, I think, is the biggest issue. Not, not that it's bad, it's just that it's some work.
Good, good questions. Anyone else question or comment? All good? Okay, um, thank you so much. And we are on to item D. This is the potential twenty twenty-four Northfield High School Bond Referendum Update. Dr. Hillman will review the November sixteenth work session, the timeline and the next steps in this process.
Yeah, so we just wanted to be able to create some space at each board meeting um for us to have an update on this process, just to keep it in front of the public's eye. What we want to make sure is that the public hears about the discussion that they are able to understand that we are inviting the feedback well before um you make any kind of decision whether or not to move forward with any kind of question in November of twenty twenty-four uh for people to be able to get their questions answered, to understand what the problems that we are trying to solve are. And just really having a community discussion before you even weigh in on what uh might be the solutions to solve some of those problems. So the timeline has been the same. Couple of things I want to highlight coming up. Uh, we do have our next um a building tour is actually, it was, it it's coming up is going to be um on December fourth, uh we have uh a suggested work session coming up. That's a week from today. It's actually December twelfth is the N H, the next building tour for the public. So that's December twelfth is the next uh building tour for the public. And then uh in addition, on December ninth, we have the bus trip to Owatonna High School. And again, what I want to be really clear with the community is that I've had a few people say, you know, Matt, you can't compare um the old, the new Owatonna High School to anything, you know, it's just a a brand-new high school is new, and that's exactly it. I want to be clear, we're not saying that's exactly what we have to have, but we think it's important for people to see what a twenty twenty-three building looks like so that they are able to have that as part of the discussion. Might we end up in with uh going for something like that? I don't know the answer to that, but what I do know is that it has generated interest for people. And I think that people um want to be able to see it and use that as part of the feedback that they may give us um as we move ahead. And so that is gonna um depart at twelve fifteen P M from door number one at the high school. I am intentionally not taking reservations for that. Um, I thought about trying to create a reservation system. I said, it just I don't want to put up any hurdles for people. So we do have two buses that are a reserve for Benjamin Bus to take us to Owatonna. You can probably fit forty or forty-five adults uh on a bus if they're, we max capacity and people want to follow us in their cars, they can certainly do so. Um, but we have a maximum of two buses that we will be able to send on that day. And so um that is really what is coming up in most recently. Uh, we did have uh our work session uh week ago tonight. We could go tonight, I believe. No, it was on Thursday. We could go last Thursday. And so that was in the High School Media Center. That was the first time that you got together to really um round the board's um discussion and what work had been previously done. So we reviewed the previous work. Sal Bagley from uh World Architects was here. She was able to share their work. You were able to start to identify uh what are the problems that we feel we need to try to solve in that building, coming to some consensus on what are the issues that we're trying to address? We can't have a solution until we really identify the issues. For members of the public, in the packet this evening, I uh put several items that the board had access to at the work session. So a detailed facilities report uh from twenty twenty-two, I want to point out that for people who read that facilities report, those costs have not been yet updated uh for current inflation rates, but they should give people a general idea. There's also a presentation that Sal gave, the timeline. And then we also included the information from Ellers. Um, Ellers is our financial advisor. They will be um helping us along this process. And the one part that uh Eller shared at that meeting was that we recently retired the bonds that were associated with the Northfield Middle School. And when we take a look at the performance of the district over that twenty-year bond, taxpayers paid approximately four million dollars less total than what was originally projected between the principal and interest. And we share that because we want taxpayers to know that we are looking out and anytime we have an opportunity to reduce the liability to the district through right refinancing. So people at home um when interest rates are really low, a lot of people took advantage of that and refinanced their home, ended up paying less in interest. That's exactly what we did with the middle school. And remember that when we say that we refinance the bonds and it costs the taxpayers about four million dollars less than projected, it actually saves the taxpayers' dollars. It is not money that comes back to the district, but when we refinance the debt, that means the amount that we levy each year to pay the debt is lower. So it isn't something that the district gets the money back. It actually goes back directly to taxpayers. Now, I also recognize that four million dollars over our tax base, it's not like people are going to Hawaii with that savings, right? But the point is, is that we are diligent in making sure that we oversee when can we get our taxpayers a better deal than what we had promised them? And we just want our taxpayers to know that regardless of the outcome of this discussion, they can have faith in the stewardship that the district has to make sure that they're getting the best deal for their tax dollar. And so we felt that that was important uh to talk about. So those are the items that we presented and discussed. And then I just want to make sure in these interim, these are not designed, this, this part of the board meeting is not designed to be a work session, if you will. But we do want them to be interim. We do want them to have the members of the community be able to see on camera. Of course, we don't um record or stream the work sessions. The public is, of course, welcome to the work sessions. Um, but we want them to see if there's any interim questions you've had in between. Some of you have shared questions with me. And we're working on uh starting our frequently asked questions document. So we'll be publishing that a a little bit later this week with the initial questions that have come in. I've asked Justin Roble, our Director of Buildings and Grounds, to be here tonight. If there were things that piqued your interest in the last uh work session, if you want to ask us a specific building-related question, um, Justin is here, and we'd be happy to answer as many of those as we can tonight or hear what you're thinking um to help us prepare for the next work session. So we're just trying to help the community understand where we are at in the process. Um, again, we're not asking the board to adopt anything uh until um the end of February. Uh, but the fact is that we're just trying to make sure uh that we keep it in front of the community and that you have an opportunity to discuss it publicly here as well.
Very good. Thank you. Um, so Justin, if you want to come up in case there's any questions, board members, um, if you have any questions for Justin or Dr. Hillman? I'll call on you. Amy, do you have any questions or comments?
I do. Uh, when we were at the work session, and this is a question for Justin. He mentioned how there are forty different HVAC systems in the high school with different sizes and different types. And then when I took the tour of the high school with the the public tour, um and I saw that these systems were actually quite large. I was imagining something more like a air conditioning system or something, you know? And I just wanted Justin to talk some more about um the HVAC systems and the complications caused by having forty different systems in the high school that are all independent.
Thank you. And Justin, I'm gonna add to that because my question that I have is similar, and that is, um, what I heard you say about those systems is that um they fit in very cramped spaces. And my question to you has to do with a new system, where would that go? Would it go in the same space? Would it go, where would it be installed, this new um HVAC system? So, thank you.
Yes, if updates were made to the existing facility how it is, it would basically just be in a a renovation of what is there. So it would be a replacement to get new equipment where it is. The, the structure itself at the high school was never originally intended to have any sort of conditioned air. Um, it was actually a steam heat building originally, later moved to hot water. And then um in the the nine, late nineties, early two thousands, there was a renovation and air handling equipment was added. Um, when that air handling equipment was added, you you'll see them peppered throughout um the courtyards and around the exterior of the building. Um, and the reason why there's so many of the systems is, is there's not adequate space for the, for the ductwork, for the air handling equipment. And that just turns into a multiplier um for every one of those units, all the heating valves, cooling valves. Um, typically, a a school the size of the high school would probably have, usually would have half at about half of as many units because he would be able to, each unit would service twice as many rooms. Um, so when you, if you look in the courtyard or at these units, you can see the ductwork that either runs up and across the roof and then makes a a penetration to the rooms that they serve. Um, because there is not adequate equipment or adequate space for air handling equipment. And in, in, and the reason why they're in the courtyard is the structure of the building is not adequate. A lot of times they'll do like a rooftop unit. Um, and it's just a better way to service space. Um, and it's the same in that situation where the structure was never adequately built um to to handle that equipment or that load on the roof.
But we would still be able to get updated equipment. It's just the obstacle of where it's placed and not efficient because it can't use.
Yeah, I I would say that is, that is a viable option, and that's what they chose to do twenty-three years ago. Um, it would be basically just redoing what we already have. So yeah, all the equipment outside um in the courtyard or around the exterior of the building.
Then do you want to address some of the points that Amy was asking about?
Yeah, um, I, yeah, I, it, you know, when you, when you're, when you tour the high school, you look at the high school, um, the courtyards are you know, basically littered with smaller units. The space, the reason why there's so many units is they only conserve like three or four rooms per unit. Um Yeah, it, what it turns into is then that turns into a multiplier. So the amount of equipment that it takes to condition the space at the high school is exponentially larger. So if if you can add a heating valve for three rooms instead of six rooms or eight rooms, um, and now the useful life, I mean, we're at a, we're at a point where we're doing maintenance and and maintaining and keeping things running. Um, but it's the kind of at a critical point where it's, it costs more to keep it running than it would be to plan ahead.
Questions? Jeff?
Hyvacs, the the huge issue and and whether we're not, we're at a, obviously at a repair or replace um position, um even looking in the future of possible different technologies. Um, I just, after being on the tour, you know, with you that last Saturday or um I just think that uh, you know, if number one, the Hy-Vac situation is the top priority to address, you know, moving forward. And I just, it's just interesting to, to as we go on, that we can just kind of understand, you know, what our options are, repair, replace, and and what would new technologies in the future look like too. And and even, you know, the option of even if it didn't happen now or happened later, you know, what are you leaving open for the possibility of a renovated NHS or a new school in the future to keep kind of all of those things kind of open. So, but yeah, repair and replace would be the big thing on the HVAC and so we can, you know, keep kids, you know, warm and cool and teachers and everybody.
Yeah, yeah, just in general, the systems, as they were intended, do work. Um, they're you know, like I say, the the shortcomings that they have is they are, every one of the units is essentially outside versus a newer structure, the, any one of the elementary schools, middle school, they all have mechanical rooms that have that, that house the equipment. Um, and it's just, it it extends a lifespan to have it inside. Um, and those facilities were built with the intent of conditioned space, whereas the high school was not. So that's where it lends to the units sitting on the ground. Uh, all the air handling, the air that gets sucked out of the building is an exposed ductwork. All the air handling, the air that gets sucked out of the building is an exposed duct work that's in the elements. If the unit's in the elements and then it pushes it right back through the supply duct work back into the, into the space. So some of the runs aren't that long, but then there's multiple runs throughout the high school where if you were on the roof, you would just see it looks like snakes essentially all over the roof. And that's all conditioned air that we're either trying to heat or cool appropriately in the season. So.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Noel?
I think this is a two edged sword. I think the HVAC issues and the insulation are compatible, are, are need to be solved at the same time. Because the insulation on the building is horrendous, I think. And the HVAC are really necessary. But without, without solving the insulation issue, we've got an HVAC issue that might, well, it could be oversized, could be undersized, depending on what happens with insulation later. Well, I think they should be both addressed at the same time.
Yeah, I, I absolutely. And I think that's the approach we're going to take is it's going to be a multifaceted weighing out our options. And, and that's where architects and engineers come in. There's issues with building envelopes, how, how you can, there can be issues with moisture and how you approach that. And that's where, you know, bringing engineers and architects in and, and just weighing out options. And that's exactly why we're basically laying it all out there and the discussion is being had. Yeah, because I, as it stands, we could put, we could, we could replace the units and be in the same situation. We could do various other things and, and really it just would have to be a, 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 a financial discussion or discussion that we will have and or what it'll turn into for a vote.
Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I have a question.
Sure, go ahead Amy.
Just, just a quick question. I'm sorry, Justin. If you were to look at all the time that your staff worked on any of the buildings, what percentage of that time would they be at the high school fixing things at the high school?
I would say the high school probably requires half of my maintenance staff's hours. So one building of the seven or actually eight that we maintain takes almost half of our time. And, and money. Yeah.
Thank you. Jenny, did you have a question?
Thank you, Claudia. I'm, I apologize if I'm going to make you repeat a few things here. But I don't, I don't think all of us are mechanical experts here, so bear with us. My question is if we were to replace all of the heating units with new units, would those units go into the same positions as the old units?
Yeah, without extensive structural modifications to the building, they would essentially just have to be lifted off and new units set where the old ones are. And that lends itself to the issues that the building has with inadequate ceiling to roof height for mechanical equipment to operate like it would be typically in a building. And then, yeah, it's just what the facility can support.
Okay. And would the duck work then remain the same?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. There's essentially, there's essentially no way. A lot of the ceiling tile where there is mechanical equipment ran, because there is some in the ceiling. The ceiling tile can barely even be lifted out and actually you almost need to dismantle the ceiling around the ceiling tile versus just lifting out a tile is typically how maintenance or any other work is performed.
So things would have to remain the same.
Yeah.
Even if we replaced with brand new units.
Yeah.
So then that makes me concerned with efficiency. In your mind, how efficient would it be to have new units, but we, we would be unable to include new duck work or any, anything to that sort?
Yeah, so it, it lends to, I think the bigger picture is, is what the school board has a vision for the high school. I would say the last referendum or the last major upgrades that the high school received gave it 23 years. So if, if the board wants to be on a 20 year plan, I would say that's would be an option. If we want to be on a 30, 40, 50 year plan, I think, you know, a broader discussion needs to be had about what's feasible and just how efficient the units are. Because I, like I said, I, the duck work is insulated, so it's not that we're losing a lot. But we certainly, if you were out there with a thermal camera, it would definitely be the, the warmest thing in the winter and it'd be the coldest thing in the summer on the roof. So it just, it doesn't lend itself for a very efficient system, but it, it, it conditions the space that educators and students, you know, it's the standard.
Okay. And how much would you say that it would increase? I guess the interior comfort level if we were to replace just the units and not, you know, the insulated factors of our exterior walls and building envelope?
Yeah. So I think we could, there again, keep pumping warm air into a space. We could do some insulation. But then it lends itself to, you know, the, kind of the, the envelope of the building. You know, we can, we can heat almost anything. It's just a matter of how long it stays warm and how comfortable the space is. I think we could do better. But I think we could also, there's all different kinds of ways. And I think having the conversation about what's best and what's the best use of our money, especially long term, I, I think, you know, approaching it from multiple angles and having the discussion is we're at, kind of at the crossroads now.
Okay, thank you. And then I have a couple of questions for Dr. Hillman. In, as part of the board packet for tonight, you did include for community members, the Northfield High School planning summary. And it's now dated November 16th, 2023. But I noticed on, I think, the fourth or fifth page maybe, it, it states that there will be a task force assembled. And then there's, and then you have membership listed. Are we, are we not having a, a new task force?
So I'm going to pull this up. So you're talking, it's the, the planning, it's, it's the planning summary slide deck?
Yes.
Okay. I think what happened there Jenny is that this was the presentation that we originally used after, before the task force convened. And I think that was just inadvertently left in the slide deck. So this was before we assembled the 2022 task force. This was the initial facility summary. We just inadvertently didn't remove that. We don't plan at this point to have a new task force. So thank you for clarifying that and catching that.
Okay. I, and that is what I assumed, but I noticed the date here being current and thinking that, you know, this was new information.
It, there is some, but it's also using some of the older information as well. So it was really updating, doing the best that we could to update the presentation that had previously been given to the board, updating the presentation date to November 16th. But we obviously missed that part about the task force. I apologize for that.
Okay. And then my second question for you is if community members are, are unable to attend the public feedback session, but yet they really have ideas or concerns to bring forward. Is right now, do you have someone specifically that they are to direct their questions to?
Yes, that would be me for right now. I'm the, I'm the traffic agent, if you will, of that. And I do think that what I would encourage people to do is I think the best thing that people who have questions about the high school facility can do is, is come on one of the tours. So we had about 16 total people at our last tour. And there were people who had not been in the building in 20 years and walked out very surprised, right? They're like, oh, I don't, because many people don't get beyond the auditorium or the gymnasium or the cafeteria. And even if you're in the auditorium, you're focused on those wonderful actors or actresses or musicians on the stage and you're not thinking about the deficiencies that are in the equipment. We can point those kinds of things out on the tour. So that is, I think, the best way to get your information. We do have a plan for that public information session in January. We've got one on the schedule right now. If we need another one, we can certainly do that. Otherwise, people can certainly email me. They can call me. And if I don't have the answer, I'll bring Justin or Sal into the mix. I've had several people who have already emailed with their feedback, but people can certainly contact me.
Okay. And then during that building, the high school building tour, are they allowed to ask questions or is that an opportunity during or after?
Anytime. Yep. So we, we, and during the tour, two hours, we had questions in every place where we were at, every room, every segment of the tour, there were questions. We did have to ask people at some points where we said, okay, let's, let's move on so we can make sure everybody gets to see the whole thing. And then we did have an opportunity for questions again at the end. So I know Jeff was on the tour, Amy was on the tour. I, I, I felt like we gave ample opportunity for people to ask questions.
And then I don't know how feasible this would be, but it might, I just wanted to make a note that it might be useful to record some of those questions that the community members are asking because usually when one person is asking, it's, there's many more who might have the same question. And, and maybe publish them somewhere or make them available somewhere.
Yeah, that's the frequently asked questions document that I had mentioned before. Not only will the questions be in, in that document, be populated with questions from board members, but you know, obviously the HVAC system is a question we're getting regularly, right? So that's going to be something that will be in. We have people who will ask questions about the comfort level or the instructional viability of spaces or the insulation, you know, as, as another thing. One thing that we will get questions from is who picked that design, right? And we can, we can give the history of that for, for better or for worse, we can give the history of that. So we will have a frequently asked questions document that as we get them, we'll start to make available. I would say board members will start to see some of those initial questions later this week, early next week before our next work session. Then we'll start publishing on our website probably right around the first of the year.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, Noel, you got a question, comment?
HVAC question.
Yes.
What is the difference in efficiency between the current HVAC units and new ones?
So if, it, it depends which direction the cooling goes. There's a few different options for cooling, whether it's a geo, geo system or a chiller system. So that would be like a bigger refrigeration. And the heating side is, is hot water. So lending itself for how the duck work arrangement is and what it takes to temper the spaces. What we would do is we're basically heating hot water and pushing it through a coil. The, a, a new unit on the ground would be, would lend itself to the same efficiency level. It would just be new components. The, you know, the issues we have with the exterior mounted equipment with the damper motors that control how much fresh air a unit has, they're outside. There's mixed air dampers, there's heating valves, cooling valves. You know, and they're between three to five, $600 apiece. VFDs, the variable frequency drives are outside on the units versus having them inside would be a typical installation. And it just, it cuts their serviceable life down. So really, what the shortcomings of the space is, is the units that are outside, they certainly function and they have functioned for 20 years. And now it's, like I say, it's more about the useful life and then what we lose. And I don't have a way to calculate how much heat we're losing in the exposed duck work outside. But it, it's substantial in Minnesota. And then same with the summer when we're trying to condition the space.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? Ben?
Thanks, Justin. How easy is it? I'm just curious to even find and retrofit those systems at this point. I would think it's, has to be difficult.
Oh, it is. So yeah, exactly. So the components, the 23 year old components, if we can find parts, we definitely go that route. Otherwise, we end up, you know, getting old stock to put into repairs or we're retrofitting to newer control systems. So the, the signals that all these valves reach on the, or receive on the units is actually a four to 20 milliamp. They don't make any of those valves anymore. So every time that we go to replace a valve, we have to have a programmer come in and reprogram that facet. And it, and it's just, there again, it's an added cost. So now we do a zero to 10 volt control is what all standard, it's the new, it's, it's what's manufactured, that's industry standard. So.
And I think this, the beginning of this school year, how many units was it? Three and seven AC units kind of went out at the same time?
Yeah. So the, the, the major chilling unit at the high school went down. Actually, this is the day before, I, the day before teachers showed up. So there was essentially 50, we were at a 50% capacity, which made the space tolerable, but it was it got relatively uncomfortable through the day. And it, the, the cost there, I think was around $12,000. And we had to, the components that we sourced were six, we, we needed six of these rebuild kits and there was 10 of them in the United States. And if it wouldn't have been that, it would have been, you know, yeah, it probably wouldn't have been air conditioning all fall if we wouldn't have been able to source those parts. And then within a few weeks of that, another unit went down for the M wing, for the art classrooms and yeah, it, then it turns into three or four days again. And, you know, drawing on relationships that we build with contractors that, you know, we can kind of ratchet things and they can adjust their schedules accordingly. But yeah, it gets to be a struggle at the high school most days.
I would assume some of the challenges is just some of this equipment is at the same point in its lifespan. So when stressed, you know, it's 95 degrees outside, something's going to fail.
Essentially, yeah, it's essentially every unit was installed at the same time in the late nineties, early two thousands. So on that referendum, so to say that there's not, you know, there's days where it's multiple catastrophic failures, you know, and it, there again, it's just, it's a matter of sourcing parts and finding parts and, but just gets, it gets pretty expensive to keep the high school.
And thank you, Ben. Noel, you had another question, comment?
It sounds to me like your technicians are magicians.
Some days.
Jenny or Jeff? Jeff?
Good. Okay. What I was going to say on the, and we were on the tour. First of all, you know, you and I both went to school there for three years. Granted, it was a few years before you, many years. But I mean, I, I liked the high school and I think it served us well. I wouldn't necessarily have gone with that California plan way back. And I guess when we always look over the years for facilities and stuff like that, I think that probably one of the best buildings in in the district is the, you know, the old Longfellow building right here. So, but, you know, we'll work with what we have to work with. The one thing that I had is just in a short synopsis of with the insulation issues around what would be some possible problem solution things, just briefly on that. And then I did have a number when we were on the tour, looking in the, all of those different classrooms we were walking in out of. Kind of a number that was thrown out was like, you know, 300 to 350 to replace the windows. And granted, you just kind of go by, you know, case by case and see what window needs to be replaced. And obviously if we could rewind the tape, you know, maybe we could have done that a long time ago for, you know, a hundred thousand. But, but again, there was also some numbers in that 2016 or whatever that had addressed things like that. So just kind of like with the insulation issues, you know, briefly thinking of how you address those and what's more complex. And then just the general comment based on windows, you know, what your, you know, thoughts are.
Yeah, windows are probably one of the bigger shortcomings of the facility. And I, there again, with inflation and the way things are changing, I, I'm sure that's ballooned even from the last number, you know, exponentially. But there again, it would be, there's, yeah, if anything was done, dressing building envelope issues would be, you know, just as big of a priority as HVAC. And, and that's where, you know, the approach to it is, is is it, at what point, you know, at, at what point and what hurdles do we go or cross? And, and what are we going to have? Are we going to have another, you know, are we going to buy 20 years? And is that fiscally responsible of us? Or is there aspects that need to be changed? Or yeah, like I said, there's many different ways we need.
But you don't want to be, you know, replacing windows in a section that maybe potentially you're going to tear down or do something different with. So I mean, we have to figure that out moving forward what we're doing.
Yeah, I, I think just in general, you know, there's various parts of the building that, you know, they might've been adequate for the space as they were intended. And that is not how you would see a school built now and or how the space would be utilized or you know, even the purpose of the space is not, it's not adequate.
Right. Well, thank you, Justin. Thank you, board members. Did you all have a final comment?
I just, to wrap this up, if that's okay, I have one. So I did not include this in the board packet, but as board members are talking, it seemed appropriate. This is one of the slides that I'm using to frame the tour. So when we start the tour, we have a very short 10 to 15 minute presentation. And at your last work session, you identified 22 problems to solve so far. When we are ideating, we have 22 bulleted items. And as I look through those, I characterize those into five buckets, if you will. And so when I shared with the tour. And as I look through those, I characterize those into five buckets, if you will. And so when I shared with the tour uh, participants, here are the kinds of problems that the school board is looking to solve with this facility. I think it's a really great way to wrap up this discussion tonight. Tonight, we heard a lot about the infrastructure, right? You know, things like lighting, things like uh, HVAC, things like insulation. And you heard from Justin, we have critical systems that are at the end of life. Another problem that you have identified to solve that of course people see on the tour is classrooms and laboratories, shops and other learning spaces that really would benefit um, from updating those academic spaces, things like the family consumer science lab, uh, the metal shop, uh, science laboratories, classrooms, et cetera. There's clearly some learning space updates that would be really beneficial um, to teachers and to students. Something that just continues to become an issue. We heard it both from you at the board meeting and from people, excuse me, at the work session and from people on the tour. The importance of natural light in a space, what that does for academic performance and what it does for student and staff mental health. Air exchange is something else that you identified as an issue to solve that we've, through the facility report, things that you talked about. And things that we hear from people on the tour, accessibility. Um, we talk about the fact that if I am wheelchair bound to get to the weight room, the accessible way to get to the weight room is not through the building. You have to go outside of the building on the sidewalk to be able to get in an outside door if I'm in a wheelchair and want to use the weight room. And so that's just an example. And of course, we've talked about the climate and comfort. Another area that we have to talk about that none of us wish we needed to talk about is safety and security. Just thinking about the dilemma that the building, uh, has with thirty-seven exits. You can get out of the building in the worst case scenario very quickly, but it also creates a situation where people can get in the building uh, in, in different ways. And then finally, um, we know that a problem to solve is our activity spaces and community access. Um, if you were to talk to Aaron Bailey, the requests for the facility use outside of the school day just have exploded in terms of people really wanting to use the facilities and just not having enough space to necessarily meet the needs or the requests of what the community has. So I just thought it was a helpful way. I took those twenty-two bullet points that you had identified and I've just put them into these buckets and I can share that with you at the next work session. I thought it was a good way to bring this conversation to a close this evening. So I just thank people for leaning into this difficult discussion. Um, there are a lot of opinions on how to address it. And, uh, we just want people to be engaged. And so we're providing people with a variety of ways to do so. And we just want people to make sure that they get their voice heard before we decide if and what we're going to put on a ballot in November of twenty twenty-four, so that we can all move forward, um, as together as possible at that point.
Good. Thank you so much. And thank you, Justin. Okay, we're on to item six, which is our committee reports. Um, several board members included a committee report um, in the packet. Those reports can stand in the packet for community members to read. Or board members, if you would like to read your report to us here at the table, you can do that. Let me know if you would like to um, speak or just let the report stand as is. Amy, would you like to report or just leave it in the packet?
I do want to add, uh, one thing, and that is to the Northfield branding committee report. Um, since I wrote my update there, the committee has decided that they will have a tent out on Winter Walk near Nugger Communications for people who want to get a preview of some of the ideas that are being discussed as far as, uh, uh, Northfield logos and, um, all of that. So if you're interested, um, nothing's been decided yet, but we are sort of heading in some general directions and we will have a chance for the community to just at least preview some of it and, uh, collect some comments on it. And that's just the one thing I wanted to add for Northfield branding. And for Subsec, I just, I just please read it. That's the update and there's nothing new to add.
Very good. Thank you so much. Ben, do you want to add? Um, or do you want to leave your report as is in the packet?
I would just highlight in, uh, the brunch that the district youth council held on November eleventh, a couple Saturdays ago. It was a delightful event and I think all the board members were there and really appreciate the opportunity to get to know all the members of the D Y C a little bit better. So just call that out in particular.
Excellent. Thank you. Good addition. Um, I did provide a report on the policy committee and I would just leave that in the packet as is. There's also a report on communications and the equity advocacy committee, um, that Dr. Hellman submitted. Okay, item seven is our consent grouping. As a reminder, there were some personnel items in the table file added to the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the grouping for separate consideration? Amy? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Moved by Jenny? Moved by Jenny, second? All right, Noel. Okay, Anita, will you facilitate a roll call vote?
Gerwitz?
Aye.
Gonzalez George?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Quinell?
Aye.
Stratmon?
Okay, thank you. Motion carries. All right, items for individual action is next. And we have two, uh, um, two items and there'll be a roll call vote for both of them. One is a resolution. First, we have the board, um, the fiscal year twenty twenty-three audit and the board is asked to approve the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three audit report as presented. Is there a motion to approve the audit report as presented? Okay, moved by Ben, second? All right, Jenny, thank you. Are there any questions or discussion? Amy? Okay, this is going to be a, a roll call vote. Anita?
Gerwitz?
Aye.
Gonzalez George?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Quinell?
Aye.
Stratmon?
Motion passes. Thank you, Anita. Next is a resolution and I will read that through. Um, and it is about our combined polling places. This resolution is for the establishing of combined polling places for multiple precincts and designating hours during which the polling places will remain open for voting for school district elections not held on the day of a statewide election. School districts are required to approve a resolution to combine polling places in the event the school district were to hold a special election. This resolution must be approved by December thirty-first of each year, whether the school district intends to hold a special election or not. The board must designate the combined polling places they would use in the future calendar year and notify county auditors by sending them a copy of the resolution. Combined polling places must be a location currently designated for use by a county or municipality. Is there a motion to approve the resolution establishing combined polling places for multiple precincts? And designating hours during which the polling places will remain open for voting for school district elections not held on the day of a statewide election? Who will move?
Can we, I mean?
Who will move? I'm gonna take a, a motion and then we can have a discussion. Okay, thank you, Ben. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Amy. Okay, um, are there any comments or questions? Hey, Jenny?
Thanks, Claudia. Um, I just have a few concerns with this resolution. Um, as we know, combined polling places, um, is allowed and governed by state statute. But there are stipulations, um, to that, within that state statute. And one of them is, um, taking, to also take into account geographical distribution when, when combining polling places. And I know that our district is very widespread and so this poses um, a problem. Um, I, I think it's, it's difficult, it was probably very difficult to come up with the reduced polling places, but with the four that we have that are all centrally located within city, um, the city of Northfield, we're removing fourteen, all fourteen rural and township polling places, all of them, we removed. And so to me, that is not taken into account, the geographical distribution that the state statute said that we must, uh, look at and must include. And so that really concerns me. And also, I understand that we often say that we have early voting. Um, but and I, and, and another thing too is that we most likely will not be using a special election, um. But I th- I think that those are just kind of excuses. And it doesn't, and those two items don't change the fact that it's still removing all rural and township polling places. And so that's kind of discriminatory. And so I will not be supporting this resolution tonight.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I, um, will be a no on this vote as well. Um, I think, uh, with the big area that we have, just four in Northfield, um, and fourteen in the rural, if in fact we ever do any special election. Um, yeah, I'll just leave it at that. So I'm gonna be a no on that.
Okay, Ben?
And I think, you know, as Jenny points out, you know, this one's really a resolution. In case it's needed, we don't have anything specific that we would have a special election this time around for, um, you know, I do think that looking at the locations in future years of where those polling places are would be a good idea to make sure that there is, you know, broader access. Part of this is you know, the district doesn't normally execute the functions of setting up and, and doing votes. And I know that Minnesota School Board Association sent out some information earlier this week or saw my email that, you know, the advantage to the district of doing this is, is financial as well. You know, it can reduce the cost if these kind of elections are needed by, you know, up to sixfold. So, you know, if it normally costs you ten thousand dollars to administer over four polling places, if you had, if you, if we didn't pass this, it couldn't be, you know, upwards of sixty thousand dollars. So part of it is just making sure that we're set up to, you know, to do it at a cost that's responsible, should that be needed, um, you know, versus having to administer elections across all of the polling places, which the district doesn't necessarily set up to do as well as the county would be. Um, so those are just kind of thoughts that run through my head in terms of why following through on something like this is important. But I think it's a good point. You know, I think we do want to look at where those locations are in future years and think about, we know the majority of the population is closer to Northfield, but can we find, you know, uh, one or two other locations that help balance that out as well. So, appreciate it. I will vote in support of it tonight, but I appreciate the comments from the other board members as well.
Nice. Any other comments or questions?
I just offer a couple of items as background. So I did include, I appreciate all of the feedback thing and we are always trying to get better at this hypothetical. And since this law was changed in twenty seventeen, we've never used combined polling places. And we've looked at it in a couple of different ways. There are some things that are different from twenty seventeen that we would just need some help problem solving. So the methodology in how you conduct elections is very different today than it was in twenty seventeen. The equipment itself, uh, just renting the equipment alone, um, is a substantial cost and requires some technical expertise. We did work with, um, some other governmental election, uh, agencies to ask if we were to ever have to have this. Could we just contract with them to be able to provide the election service? Because we just don't have that expertise on staff. And the answer was no. And so we would have to run our own election, which means we'd have to rent the equipment, become technically sophisticated. So that is a problem that we need to solve. If, if board members would like us to look at more polling places over time, we certainly just means that that's more equipment to rent, more electric. And, and those problems can be solved. But they are very different than they were in twenty seventeen. And so, um, I just did a little bit of a study too. There were ninety-four elections this year um, in combined with, so school districts in this off year had, there are ninety-four different elections by my count. And really the way that districts approach this is all over the board. So we can continue to do a little bit more research about how do other districts handle this? Um, by way of example, Wilmer, which in many ways is a, a similar district to ours, a little bit, there's four thousand less voters. But they had one polling place, you know, for their entire district. Um, we've looked at it from what's the right, what's the right distribution of voters, right, at a polling place to make sure that people aren't waiting in line. So ours is about thirty-five hundred voters uh, per polling place. And you just see wild ranges of how many voters are assigned to a polling place. So I just share that is that, you know, we do take this proposal seriously. We do are trying to provide some, um, as effective as we possibly can in this hypothetical model, um, of how do we most efficiently run the election if we were to have to. And again, we don't plan to in twenty twenty-four. We plan to do something in November. Uh, but I would also just be curious to hear from board members, not necessarily tonight. But, you know, what is the level of, um, what would the level of expectation be should we expand the polling places? What number do we think would be appropriate? What do we think the amount of money, um, would be worthwhile? You know, to, for us to be able to spend on that. I think any dollar spent on elections is worth it. But in the unlikely event that we have to, what is the, what is the budget that you think would be appropriate? Cause we, we really don't have all of the details of what would it cost to, uh, rent all of the equipment and things like that today. So those are just things that we would think about this over the next year. Again, don't anticipate having a special election in twenty twenty-five either, but we do have to come up with this hypothetical and we'd certainly be open to suggestions. This is the third iteration that we've used the same iteration of this since twenty twenty. Um, in twenty seventeen, we did have a larger number of polling places. Uh, then we reduced it to five at one point and now we are at four. And again, lots of different ways to look at it, but things have changed since twenty seventeen, just in the complexity of us having to run our own election. And we, if, if we were to have to do that, we just want to make sure we could provide an excellent service, uh, to our community. So, um, I do have this data that I had, uh, one of our administrative assistants, collective people are interested in that of you know, how did different districts divide out there? It's, I, I find it fascinating because I find things like this fascinating. So if people are interested in that, I'd be certainly happy to share that at some point. But I just, I wanted to give a little bit of background of how we, um, arrived. Then I had, did include a document in the packet that tried to describe how we got to where we are.
Okay, very good. Noel?
Dr. Hellman, can you put, uh, mail-in election voting in that equation too?
Yeah, so, um, as Jenny said, you know, early voting is something that is different. You're required to allow early voting. I believe it's forty-six days now before the election. Um, forty-six days. And so that's a longer time period than, you've been able to mail vote for a long time. I, I just think that the amount of time in which you're able to cast your ballot early is different than what it was before. Um, but that does not take away from the fact that we do combine polling places. There's no question about that. And so for people who like to vote on election day, that can be a challenge.
Okay, anyone else comment or question?
Um, I think my question has to do with this wording combined polling places. So that that is coming from the state asking us as a school district to establish combined polling places, meaning that the state already assumes that in a special election, districts will make a smart choice to combine polling places rather than say special election and all places are open. It is that?
That is my understanding.
Okay. So this is, um, a required resolution and as others have already said, and also in your, um, summary in the packet, highly unlikely that we will hold a special election. And so in the, um, uh, I think that people are making important comments, um, but also note that the decision to do the combined place, the combined polling places has to do with the state asking us to combine or assuming that we will combine. And then also not based on discriminating against any voters, but based on um, the cost of those polling places. So, um,
We get to choose how many combined polling, there are, we have control over a number of different pieces. But it is a requirement to have a, a resolution combining polling places in case of a special election.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Anita, will you facilitate a roll call vote?
Gerwitz?
Aye.
Gonzalez George?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Nelson?
Nay.
Quinell?
Nay.
Stratmon?
Okay, thank you. Motion passes or resolution passes. Next on our agenda is the items for information. We have a school board training coming up December twentieth and Thursday, December twenty-first. That will be at five thirty to eight thirty in the district office boardroom. Um, MSBA will be facilitating phase three training for board members. Um, Dr. Hellman, is this a, uh, the board training? Is that something that's open to the public?
Uh, yes, it would be technically a work session. So if people did want to come and observe the training, they would be able to do so.
Okay, very good. So December twenty twenty-first, five thirty to eight thirty. Right, um, item. Our next item is our future meetings and work sessions. Those are, uh, work session coming up Monday, December 4th, 5:30 at the high school, the social media center. I'm sorry, in the school media center. Then Monday, December 11th is our regular board meeting, 6:00 PM here in this boardroom. Monday, January 8th will be our organizational meeting. That's 6:00 PM also here in this boardroom. And then we will have our regular meeting Monday, January 22nd, 2024. Um, 6:00 PM regular board meeting here in the boardroom. We will have our future regular meetings. Sorry, let's see, make sure I didn't copy this. Yes. Okay, so those are our future meetings and work sessions. Um, that is all the business that we have tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn? Moved by Noel, second by Jeff. Um, Anita, will you facilitate a roll call vote?
Gerwitz?
Aye.
Gonzalez George?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Quinell?
Aye.
Stratmon?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes. Thank you, everyone.